All right, very good, 6:30. Why don't we start? Jim come in later, do a few things until he's in. All right, I just want to welcome everyone to the Wareham's only Board of Appeals tonight, Wednesday, May 26, 2021. It is 6:30 PM. And apparently we're on Zoom meeting. I want to call the meeting to order, make a roll call. Veronica, Denise. Thank you, Mute. Mute, Bonia.
I'm here.
Okay, Richard Sample.
Yeah.
Chris Conti.
Here.
Jake Morrison.
Here.
Myself, Nazir Al Qalasi here, also present, our town planner, Cam Buckland, and Mr. Charles Rowley, professional engineer, independent consultant. And no preliminary business, so we're gonna go ahead with the continued public hearing. Twenty-two dash twenty Frederick Mannix for 238 Sandwich Road. Kenny, I guess we have a continuance in that?
That's right, you have a request for a continuance to June 9th.
All right, the Council of Attorney Moore and signed the extension and the performance extension too, gave us extension. What date she give it till?
The decision deadline still remains at June 19th.
June 19th. Okay, one second. So next time, 9. Okay, so next time, we're gonna get another extension next time, I guess.
That's right.
All right, very good. All right, so we have a... Can we get a motion to continue? A motion to continue twenty-two dash twenty Frederick Mannix on the site plan review 238 to 40 Sandwich Road to continue until June 9th?
I make a motion to continue to June 9th?
Yeah, very well. All right, very good. I have a motion by Richard. Do I have a second to continue?
Second.
Second.
Morrison, sorry, beat ya.
That's okay. Second by Jake Morrison. All in favor, say aye, Richard.
Aye.
Uh, Jake.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So Nazir Al Qalasi, aye. Uh, so that is... Uh, okay, that's June 9th. Just bear with me quick, just two seconds, and let me catch my thoughts, so we're not confused here. Five, zero, zero. This matter, Mr. Sample's sitting on it, but we have enough vote to continue. All right. Uh, Jimmy's here. Need Jimmy for the next one.
Jimmy's not on yet.
He's not. Council of Bobrovsky, I want to push you. We have one board member. I'm just gonna go to second hearing and get back to you, okay?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, that would be fine.
Yeah, because Jim was on that hearing and should be coming in Mrs. Sweet also, if you get the message. All right, uh, we go to eighteen dash twenty-one Daniel Georgiana on forty-five Longwood Ave. Is Mr. Georgiana here? Daniel.
He's also asked for a continuance.
Okay. All right, so, and Mr. Eighteen, and he is long with... Okay, so on eighteen twenty-one, can I have a motion to continue eighteen dash twenty-one forty-five Longwood Ave for Mr. Daniel Georgiana?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to continue by Chris. Do I have a second?
Second, Richard Sample.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye, Richard.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Uh, Jake.
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. So that's also continued to the ninth. All right, well, we... Continued. Okay. I'm just gonna see what Jim is. Quick, let me think. Just give me a second, gentlemen, ladies, gentlemen, just a second. Okay, very good. Jim will be on for a couple of minutes. We're gonna move to twenty-four dash twenty-one Alyssa Moore, special permit to Sarabath Lane. Okay, public hearing still open as Mrs. Morse and Alyssa Morse. Okay. And, uh... And I'll see her here. What's the deadline on that, Ken?
July 27th.
Okay.
July 27th.
All right, why don't we continue this to July 9th? Do I have a motion to continue twenty... twenty-four dash twenty-one?
Uh, June 9th, Naz?
To June 9th, yes.
I'll make motion.
Motion by Veronica to continue Alyssa Morse twenty-four dash twenty-one to Sarabath Lane till June 9th. Do I have a second?
Second, Richard Sample.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye, Richard. Richard?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Chris?
Upstain.
Upstain, Jake?
Aye.
And... And myself. Aye, just gonna carry regardless. All right, so it's continued to the June 9th. Okay, one second. And that was Richard's last time. Okay. Jimmy should be here any second. All right, uh...
He's coming on now.
All right, very good.
You guys miss me?
Oh, yeah.
What have you been doing, Jim?
I was opening the backyard, bending down the hatches for this big hurricane that's gonna come through tonight.
My head has been in the sand. I don't know anything about a hurricane.
All right, I probably didn't know one had that. Jim, Mr. Jim Akabachi, our clerk is in at 6:39 PM. All right, we're gonna move to continue public hearing two, two dash twenty-one TGCI in Manica, comprehensive permit, chapter forty B, Settlers' Grant, and there's three one two eight B Cranberry Highway. And public hearing still open. And it's yours, Mrs. Sweet, or Council Bobrovsky, whoever likes to.
I'd like to start, Mr. Chairman. Mark Bobrovsky, for the record, my office is in Concord. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Sweet and Mr. Grady to give you an update in terms of recent plan changes and submittals, and then I would offer to take the board through the draft decision, just a quick walk-through, if that would be of usefulness to the board.
Very well. Sweet, cheers.
Thank you. Good evening. Lynn Sweet, LDS Consulting Group, Wellesley, Massachusetts. Um, I do not believe that we have actually had any, uh, plan changes since the last meeting. Um, there were two items that we were following up on, um, with regard to the decision. One of them was with regard to, uh, trash removal. And, um, I think Brian has, um, spoken with someone from the town on that, and the other is with regard to the subdivision road, and I think Mark is gonna speak to that.
Yeah.
So I'll let Brian give you a quick update on his conversation on the trash removal.
Yeah, before, before Brian goes, and I regarding the trash, it's, it's up to you and the town. It's not up to us who picks trash or would dictate. We can dictate how you pick your trash or who uses. I know the town now, they use ABC. They're gonna have mandate that you use them. So that's between you and the town. I'll ask any other board member if they have an input on that. And also, I know you had some issues last time. I know Mr. Rowley had asked to have a covenant. Uh, I, I read it and looked at it and looked at it. I don't think a covenant is necessary in this matter, because a special permit acts like a covenant. Because usually covenants are on regular subdivision forms, C or A, that they don't have any rules, any controls. The covenants will come in and control it. But in this matter, I believe a, the special permit covers all the conditions. Uh, the only thing we might add, uh, that, that no, uh, surety bond or, uh, the surety bond to be, uh, proposed if the road is not finished at a hundred fifty percent uh, value of the, of your estimate. You have to bring estimates, how much the road costs. The board has to decide if it's fair number and it's hundred fifty percent. If you wanna go ahead and get building permits and stuff. Uh, I, I know Mr. Charlie, he, he wanted this covenant, Mr. Rowley. But I, I just wanna go to him just to see if he agrees with me, but it's again, it's up to the board what they decide. But Charlie, what do you think?
Uh, to the extent that the, um, document identifies, uh, this in some way that is equivalent to a covenant, I have no problem with it. Um, if language were to be inserted that says the terms of this, um, special permit are intended to be, uh, similar to a covenant or language to that idea, um, I have no problem with that. Uh, the only thing I would be, um, a little bit concerned about would be that, uh, I don't know whether or not there's gonna be a, a plan that's recorded in the registered deeds. Uh, that was one question that I had put out to both, uh, uh, Mark and to Miss Sweet back a couple of weeks ago. So I don't know whether or not there is any plan that's gonna be recorded. Uh, if there is, I think there should be some reference on that plan as well, just to tie the two documents together. And then I think there should be some language in there that does specify that in order to satisfy the terms of, um, some other means of securing the road, that as you've suggested, Mr. Chairman, the applicant needs to provide documentation um, and pricing for each of the items that need to be secured. So that there's no question but what that has to be provided to the town. Um, I think the, the more clarity we put into this in terms of what the requirements are, the less questions there are at a later date.
I, I agree. I, I totally, I, I, I think we should have a racket on plan. I mean, plans on racket, recorded, the registered deed will ask Mr. Uh, Mr. Grady to make a mile up and put a racket, and it would, and the special permit will be, of course, recorded. I would reference the plan. So there's no question asked in the future. Also, uh, the performance bond, the surety bond, like we talked, and, uh, if the applicant chooses to do the road complete, apparently he doesn't need, they don't need it. If they do just the binder and they wanna do all the drainage, I wanna pull permits, like Mr. Rowley said, come up with the estimate, we'll review it, we agree to it. Also, it goes without saying, uh, town consultant, Mr. Rowley, will be performing, uh, uh, regular inspections. Uh, the contractor who's doing the site work, it's the burden on him to call Mr. Rowley with every stage. There's, there's zero tolerance in that. If he buries something without inspection, he'll have to re-dig it. So just to let your contractor knows, Mrs. Sweet, that's how it is here. Like, you can't just put the gravel, say, oh, I decided, oh, I'm sorry. He will have to dig it out. If Mr. Rowley don't give us good bill of health, we cannot release this project at the end.
One of the things we exchanged emails about today, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Rowley, was, uh, foundation permits and whether or not a performance bond would be necessary for them. Um, I emailed David, uh, in the building office two or three times, and we exchanged some back and forth. But, you know, with, with the town hall mostly closed, an email not available when he's out on the job, it, it kind of ended in a dead end. Um, what we would propose is to be able to pull foundation permits without a performance bond. We're not gonna get a building permit without a performance bond. We agree completely. But the foundation permits aren't, aren't gonna lead to occupancy.
Right. I mean, I, I, I do agree. I, I'm a builder myself, and the board always give a break, maybe five, twenty-five percent of the project, some building permit, not only, uh, foundation, but no occupancy permit.
Oh, no.
You know, until it's the surety bond, but this is up to the board if they agree to this.
So we would, we would propose in this paragraph that was just up on the screen, that it's a, uh, foundation permits can be issued without, uh, a performance bond in place.
Foundation permits for the whole project?
Well, I think they're gonna dribble their way up the road. I don't think that it will be, um, I don't think it'll be for the whole project.
Well, again, I'm gonna ask my board, but I don't have a problem issuing just a, personally, just a foundation permit, only foundation. No, no, the orange card would be released for the building permit, but I would think your builder would rather have complete building permits, twenty-five percent of the project versus all foundations, but I'm okay with this. Let me start with the board, uh, see their thoughts. I'll start with Veronica. What's your thoughts so far? You comprehending all that?
Yeah, um, a bit. Was, I thought we were talking about, um, the bond in regards to the road and, and what, what's the status of that?
The bond, the bond, before they get any occupancy, say they finish a house and they wanna sell it or a condo, whatever you call it. They, and say that's left the, the final code or the landscape, and so they go give us an estimate. When the contractor say their estimate says, oh, it costs hundred thousand, we look at it, if we think Mr. Rowley and ourselves on the board will look at it. If we think that, uh, that estimate's reasonable, they have to put a surety bond at hundred fifty thousand. And the town is the beneficiary of the surety bond. So when they go out and, and they get an occupancy permit and say they move in, people move in, and the developer disappear, the town can go cash this bond, and they can finish the road.
Well, I understand what the bond is for. I'm just trying to understand when it typically is in place. And I know Charlie had talked about something with the road and having a bond in place, if I'm correct, project, right?
If they don't wanna build anything, they wouldn't need any bond. If the road would be complete, landscaping, drainage, everything's done, they wouldn't need any bond. If they wanna start construction prior, if they wanna start construction prior to this, they would need a surety bond. And like I said, the, the board, if they choose to give them only foundations, uh, five units, we'll discuss these numbers as we go.
Okay, I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
Okay, Jimmy, what do you think?
Um, my, my take on the whole thing is, I'd like to see the binder in at, at the same time as foundations or thereabouts. Once the binder's down, I don't care how many foundations they put in, it's just the binder down, traffic in and out, it's a lot less dust, it's a lot less, you know? And, and then as far as the bond goes, um, I think we need a bond, just like you've suggested, and, and I'm good, you guys have got it covered.
So, so Jimmy, let me, let me just be clear about it. So you wanna bond before even concrete foundations, before any foundations?
I think so. Yeah, I think so, because I'd like to... On a project like this, where it's so close to so many other, to businesses and residences, and another one being built across the street, um, a hundred and fifty units, the intersection is gonna change there. I mean, it's a very, very, very active area. So all I'm saying is, I'd like to see the binder in before there's any significant amount of traffic, and that's concrete trucks and, you know, the excavators, they gotta go in there and dig the holes. I get it, but once you start pouring concrete and then the jobbers start coming, I think I'd like to see the binder down. So, yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Or they're gonna have to do, uh, dust control, as probably as, as the binder, I would say it'd be better for them. All right, so that's Jimmy's opinion. Chris, what do you think?
I, I agree with Jim. I'm, I'm good. I would like to see, um, the binder down too, uh, at, at that time of foundations also. I agree with Jim. And I'm for the, um, the bond.
Okay, Richard, what do you think?
For the bond, because it seems like it's a, an insurance policy to make sure that things are gonna follow through the way that we planned on it.
All right, Jake?
Uh, nothing at this time.
All right, and, uh, well, let me jump to the public. Anyone in the public wanna comment on this?
Nazir, before, before you go there, could I just comment on that?
Sure.
Um, does everybody realize that if, if you go to the extent of requiring a binder to be put down before you get any foundations in, that all of the utilities that are below that binder will also have to be in place by that time? In other words, the water, the water main is gonna have to be in place, the sewer lines within the street and all the stubs too, what would be normally a property boundary would have to be in place. Uh, all the drainage would have to be put in place. All the base material would have to be placed, and then the binder. So that's a fair amount of work to ask somebody to do before they, uh, pull any kind of a permit. But that's where the covenant comes in or where the, where the bond comes in. And it typically is left up to the, uh, contractor as to how he wants to do that. Uh, just as a, as a background, the subdivision rules and regulations do not dictate which of the four requirements, um, a contractor must meet. He simply has to select one. And from time to time, he can couple them together. For example, if he wanted, uh, five building permits, uh, he could keep the rest of the property under covenant and then, uh, include a performance bond in addition to the covenant that's left. If, if you want to go the route that everything has got to be done up through and including the binder, uh, you're telling him he can't do anything until that's done. That puts a fairly substantial, uh, strain on him, it seems to me. I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to take sides in this. I'm just trying to point out what I think would be the reality of the situation.
Can I ask a question?
Nazir, you're...
Okay, all right, how about now? I, uh, I understand what Charlie says, but if, if a developer doing the size subdivision cannot somehow afford to put the sewer line and the water line prior to starting, I, I think he's in the wrong business. Or if he's not capable to secure loans or whatever. And regardless, he can't put foundations without these, Charlie. I mean, how he's gonna be putting foundations and digging the road, the sewer, I'm assuming it's gonna be in the middle of the road, and the water in the shoulder, the gas, all this underground utilities, he, they, there's no way they'll be able to work if they don't have these in place. The only thing I would think at the end, maybe the, the retention bond at the end, the landscape and the binder and the sidewalk, he could leave them at the end. So I think it's only fair. I think Jimmy's comments fair, uh, if he, if he's, I mean, they could do just, I mean, if they do all the underground, they don't have to do the binder. We could get a, uh, surety bond on the binder. Uh, that would work, but as far as I'm concerned, I think all the infrastructure should be done prior to do any holes or any, any foundations, because it will be a mess there. It's a tight site. It's not like you, you, you have a hundred feet between houses. There's only like twenty-five, so it's very tight. So to work between, doing foundations and working on the road, it's crazy. I've done, done jobs, I manage them properly. I think I'm pretty good at it. I think this is the right way to do it.
That's...
Who would like to speak?
That's your choice, obviously.
Yeah, absolutely.
If, if I could, this is Scott Blackdon, a representative for Mr. Grossman. Um, if I could just comment, and Mr. Chairman, obviously dealing in the construction business, understand this. The, um, the reason that we brought up the question about the foundations was, was, was because of what you just commented on. It is a tight site, um, in term, there's not a lot of area to be stockpiling material. So the ideal situation would be able to, uh, be able to dig out, dig out the foundation holes, probably use the gravel, you know, in the roadway, get the foundations in, get them backfilled. Obviously, there's no request for any kind of building permit, so it's not like it can, there's no risk. It's not like it can go any, you know, the homes couldn't even be built. We're just, but the, but to be able to do the foundation part on a site like this, because of stockpiling constraints and because of the size of the site, um, that was the reason that that was asked. It's, it's to be able to put the foundations in at the time that the infrastructure of the road is being done, um, would help, would help.
Yeah, Mr. Blackdon, if I may, Wareham does not issue just a foundation permit. They issue a whole permit. We don't do just, we don't, the Archimiss, our building department don't hand just the foundation permits. We can't just go get a foundation permit. We don't have that in Wareham.
Okay, that's, that's one thing that we were trying to get clarification on today with the building inspector.
We don't have that. So you can, you gotta get a full permit. What you do, you get a foundation permit, you have the whole package, and you go do the foundation, then you get an ASB to the department. The department will give you the, your orange card or the building permit. That's how it works, one-shot deal. They don't do it separate. Uh, I, I do understand what you're doing, so, but if you wanna do this, like you're saying, start putting foundations, so you can do any site work at all if you're doing foundations. And you're not gonna be able to work on the road. You're only gonna be cutting the road, cut the trees and cut the road and start popping foundations. And if you wanna do this, I don't have a problem. That's gonna be a hefty surety bond. I personally, I don't have a problem. We'll see what the board says, but that'd be an expensive surety bond to post. You talk on a road like this, probably close to probably six, seven hundred thousand, talking about million two of, uh, million one, uh, surety bond. Are you up to that?
Well, this is why I suggested what I suggested to Mr. Buckland in, uh, and, uh, I think Miss Sweet sent the, uh, proposal to him, that, that it's not a subdivision. I understand that well, but the board's closest local regulation to what we need to do is the subdivision provision that says, no building permit shall be issued until all improvements specified are constructed and installed, provided however, building permits may be issued if the applicant provides a performance guarantee under the provision set forth in the Planning Board Subdivision Rules and Regulations, section Roman numeral four C, to ensure completion of all remaining work. That's got the methodology in it that the planning board is used to. Mr. Rowley's certainly used to it, and it would come up with the right number. And we would choose, obviously, a covenant at the beginning, and then switch it off to one of the other three eighty-one U performance types. Uh, and any document would be reviewed by legal counsel.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay if you wanna post that much of a bond. Personally, we'll see what the board says.
Well, I think they can, they can do the work short of getting the building permits that way and put the binder course down, maybe, maybe the drainage, uh, you know, obviously, they can go as far as they can go before they put the performance guarantee down and then start pulling building permits.
Put the performance guarantee down and then start pulling building permits.
Right, once you put your, your binder, that's mean your drains are in, all your infrastructures are in.
Yep.
So you spent all that money already. Uh, go back, Jimmy, did you get that? What do you think?
I'm, I'm, I'm following it, you know, I think. I think we're fine, and it sounds to me like the binder's gonna be down when I want, I mean, I. Alright, I don't care if the foundations go in at the same time that the road is built. But they're not gonna start building houses until the binder is down, that's my point in a nutshell, so.
Okay, so Mr. Counsel Bobrovsky, you understand, we, Jimmy's saying, saying, he, he has no problem issuing the. The permit, but even an ASB is provided, the building commissioner cannot hand you the building permit. He'll give you only the, like, you do your foundation.
Yep.
But he won't hand you the orange card to do the building. Is that fine?
Well, I would expect that he would hand the orange card to do the building if and when there's a full performance bond.
Right, yeah, if there is, of course, that goes without saying, absolutely.
Yep.
So, you got, you got that? Yes, Ms. Sweet, you wanna say something?
So, I, I just wanna make sure, so we've given you, you know, proposed language that I've had up on the screen with regard to getting the building permit. It sounds like we need to put some language in here with regard to the foundation permit. And, and the, the main concern that you have is that. Um, with regard to building the roadways and doing the foundations, there needs to be a binder code before you get to this. This language that's up here on the screen before a building permit.
I, I don't, I don't mind personally if you could manage, it's a tough site to do the roads and the foundation together, that's what I'm suggesting. But if you guys could manage this, great, God love you.
To the end of this.
One at a time, so, okay, who wants to speak, Mr. Bobrovsky?
Yeah, can we, can we add a sentence to the, where the cursor is that you see right now? That just does, foundation permits, um, I'm sorry, foundations may be, may be installed. Without a performance guarantee.
Okay. Okay.
Because if, if you're right in, it's all part of the same building permit, and we only, and we stop at the foundation, that's what we. There we go.
That's fine. Okay, as the, I, I'm just, I'm not gonna ask if the board are okay with that language, but I'm gonna ask. Any of the board members, or we don't go to each one, any board members not okay with that language?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm just, I don't know if I'm being a pain in the neck here, or if I'm just not getting it, but. I'm okay with that, I'm, I'm okay, I understand the intent, and I'm not trying to make it hard on the developer. But where do we stand if? Eight foundations, ten foundations, three foundations go in the ground. The road is not significantly developed, because that's what we're agreeing to, we're saying that that. Concrete, concrete foundations can exist. There'll be no significant road or binder laying out a road. And the economy takes a big, huge dump up. Grossman goes belly up, they have to borrow money from the federal government just to eat. And the town's left with holes in the ground that kids are gonna walk on and fall in and crack their head open, and no money to fill them.
I guess the town will have to foreclose on it at that point.
And the town gets to own, that's, that, I'm just, I'm just pointing out the fact.
I understand, I totally understand, yeah, definitely, absolutely.
So, does it make sense to put a limit on the foundations?
I lived in a condo that, you know, they had foundations on either side of the building. That were never gonna be built on, and I went to a meeting one time, and they said, what happens if the kids come home from school and they. You know, they do the walk on the edge of the foundation and they fall in, whose insurance, or who are they, who's gonna pay for that kid to lay in a coma?
Right, absolutely, you're right, you're right, but a project like this, it goes without saying, they have to fence it off, has to be secured.
Okay.
It's one of the forty B regulations.
Then I am being a pain in the neck, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to be.
No, no, you don't, totally makes sense, a project like that, forty B project should have security.
Yeah, we definitely, um, put an item in our pro forma for security, and they'll most likely not only fence it. But they'll also monitor it with security cameras.
And if the bank takes it back, they'll make every effort to, um, do exactly that and find a new. Builder for this that will move on quickly without the foundations crumbling in place.
So what's your wishes, Jimmy? We gotta have some wishes.
I got, I'm, I'm, I'm all out of wishes, I'm, I'm living the dream.
Can I ask a question?
I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, does it make sense to put a limit on the number of foundations that can be put in before the performance bond is pulled?
Okay, sure, you could do, just suggest any number. Why don't we suggest one side, so ten, like the left or the right side? This way they could move the, the stockpile on the other side. So they could do the ones up to ten on one side, it'll make their life easier with managing the site. So they pick and choose either the left or right, I would pick the side with the, with the sidewalk first, so they could finish that and start doing the sidewalk.
That sounds fair, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
So, I did, um, I just added in, uh, that now says up to ten foundations may be installed without a performance guarantee?
Yeah. Okay, Richard and Jake and Chris, any input?
So it's ten foundations, that's twenty condos. That's the.
No, it's.
Um, actually, uh, ten, um, let's see. It's, it's interesting, because there are ten built, ten, you know, total buildings, so.
There'd be five foundations.
Um, up to. I'm gonna do five foundations, and then I'm gonna do in parentheses, ten units. Does that make it very clear?
Much better, yeah.
Nope, wait, I can't spell though, hang on. Okay.
Okay. Kenny, Kenny, you there, Mr. Buckland?
Yes, I am.
Okay, what do you think of that?
I think this is, this is good, it covers all the, all the bases on this, uh, the one point I'd like to, to point out is that the. Insurance bond, if it is an insurance bond, has to be approved by the, the Board of Selectmen as well.
Absolutely, they own it, so they have to, it's always go to them. So, but they could, I mean, it goes without saying, but she could add, and Mrs. Sweet could add that.
Is it, um, so any such performance guarantee shall be approved as deformed by ZBA's legal counsel and or?
And selectmen.
And so.
Or the selectmen, yeah.
As required or something like that? I don't know, I'm not the lawyer, I just want Mark to make sure this is okay.
I just think you could put a period after the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
You don't need that, you're fine.
Right, that's good, right there. Okay.
Well, we beat that one to death.
Would you like me to walk through the draft decision, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, why don't we do that?
Would you like the five-minute version or the five-hour version?
What do you guys, I would like the five-minute version.
Okay, then, let's start with the conditions, if you will.
Okay.
So this is a pretty standard homeownership forty B approval. Most of the ones I've written recently, I'm sure, as, as have you, is, uh. Are rentals, if you go to, uh, Lynn, if you go to A four, I wanna call attention to that. You're, you're way up ahead of me.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
Yep, that's good, project is constructed in accordance with the approved plans. If there's a proposed change, the building commissioner determines whether it's a change or whether it's just a field adjustment. Minor changes, he can, he can approve them. Um, if he thinks it's beyond that and it's up to the level of a change, it goes to the board. And the board determines whether it's an insubstantial or a substantial change in accordance with. Seven sixty CMR five six point oh five eleven, that's the standard practice. I'm not gonna hit every condition, but I'll hit the highlights. Uh, number ten on the next page, there's eighty parking spaces. Uh, installed prior to the issuance of the CO for the unit they're intended to serve. Number, number sixteen, um, this is a perpetually binding condition, I suppose that means.
Excuse me, my, I'm eighty, is that, that's four per unit? That's two in the garage and two in the driveway, is that the plan?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, so, excuse me.
Yep.
I, I have a question about that also, so a maximum of eighty, so you can have less than eighty spaces?
Uh, why don't we just say there shall be eighty parking spaces?
You want me to get rid of a maximum?
Yeah, just say there shall be eighty parking spaces.
Right.
Thank you.
You bet, um, number sixteen, this is perpetual, perpetual means in this case, as long as the buildings are standing, I suppose. Uh, but the idea here is not that this will terminate in thirty years, that the buildings will go on being affordable until their demise. Um, the, number nineteen on page six. Uh, everything that's being built on the property, all improvements, sidewalks, driveways, utilities, drainage systems will remain private in perpetuity. And Wareham doesn't have any responsibility for the operation or maintenance. And all that will be incorporated into the condo documents. Uh, the affordability requirements are what you're used to, uh, five of the twenty units or twenty-five percent will be affordable. The price will not exceed, uh, that which is, uh. Affordable to eighty percent area median income as determined, adjusted for household size as determined by NEF. HUD and DHCD slash mass housing. Uh, dispersed throughout the project, subject to final approval. That there's, uh, no distinguishability between the units, which is a common feature of these kinds of, uh, homeownership projects. So the applicant number three will, uh, put together a fair marketing plan in compliance with all federal laws. Uh, we are doing a local preference in paragraph number four. Uh, the preference is probably the one that you've used in the past, but you get to call the shot on that.
Like, meaning, meaning whether or not they want up to a seventy percent local preference?
Well, that plus the preference in terms of Wareham residents, you know, parents and children of Wareham residents.
Who's the one, who's the one, the lottery?
Yeah, that, that, DHCD has preference categories in, in mass housing. Um, so there are only three preference categories that are allowed.
Can we say eighty percent Wareham resident?
Um, you can, you can do up to seventy percent.
Alright, also, if Mr. Grady on, on, uh, is listening, we, you need to identify which one the. On the plan, which one are the forty Bs? It has to be staggered everywhere, they cannot be next to each other, you probably already know that.
I don't know if we need to identify that on the plan, isn't that in the conditions that they are to be staggered?
It is.
Yeah, we've definitely done a, done a dry run, um, to make sure that they're not across from each other or next to each other. Um, so that when it gets to the affordable housing. Um, lottery, um, at the time that the, that the developer goes to final closing with mass housing. Which is typically the next step after this. If an affair marketing plan is drafted and approved and attached to that will be the location of the affordable units. Um, I don't know that a lottery agent has been identified at this point in time. But mass housing has really gotten very restrictive as to who can do lotteries and who needs to monitor units. So, uh, they, they do have a list, list of approved lottery agents.
Alright, we'll leave it up to them then, we'll leave it up to them, okay.
Are you, Mark, are you okay with me adding in of up to seventy percent of the affordable units? So this isn't a given, but, but, um, you know, you have to ask permission for it.
Yes, I, I would always add, uh, in that provision, consistent with federal fair housing laws.
Right.
Now, see, could I ask a question about that?
Sure, sure.
Um, going back to the, the foundations that you said you would allow. Um, up to five foundations, would it be appropriate since twenty-five percent of all of the units have to be affordable? Would it make sense to say that twenty-five percent of the first five have to also be affordable when they're applied for?
So basically, the rule of thumb here, and I've seen it in permits. And the monitoring agent is gonna require this, is that for every three market rate units that are built. One affordable unit needs to be built, would you like that spelled out in the permit?
That's on the next page, it's number seven.
Oh, here we go, we've already got it, hang on.
Yeah, I've done forty B, that's how, how, that's how mass housing like to see it, every.
Yeah. No, this is great, this is it.
Um, I, I have a question about the of up to seventy percent, that's, is that saying that we would like it to be seventy cent? I mean, it could be one percent if it's of up to, right?
Uh, DHCD will only allow seventy percent of, of local preference, so, um. You know.
And, and if they might come back, say, we don't want seventy, one fifty, it's only, totally up to them.
So basically, what happens is, has, um, if the town, and Ken may know this. If the town has prepared a local preference letter. That's been submitted either to DHCD or mass housing, sort of proving why you deserve a local preference. Um, that, the state, if, if you give them the evidence that you are in, that, that you need it. Um, mass housing does not dictate, they'll, they'll give you the seventy percent, but I'm just curious, Ken, if you're aware. Because if it's been done on one project, you just resubmit the same letter again.
Kenny? Okay, he's not listening, anyway, I can. And if they give us the seventy, that'd be great. We do have a long wait unless they're Wareham, so hopefully they give us the seventy.
And, and that's part of what goes into the local preference request, you'll say, we have this many people waiting. We have this many people earning less than eighty percent of AMI, sometimes you look at, um. Uh, minority, you know, percentages in the town and so on and so forth. But it's not something that the town will have to prove, like, over and over again, once you've done it. You know, they keep the letter on file.
Uh, we printed together the letter for the Little Town, Littleton Drive project, so, um, we're covered on the seventy percent.
Oh, good. Terrific, yeah, same letter.
Because I've written too many zoning opinions for financing and had a hunt and pack throughout the. Decision in order to find timing of conditions, here's number C, prior to commencement of construction, that's what you have to do. Next category down, prior to the issuance of a building permit, this is usually when the financing opinion gets put together, this is what you have to do. So it's all in one place, you don't have to look around for it.
And this is the final approval that I was talking about, which is sort of the next step in the process. Where they have to do the regulatory agreement and the marketing plan.
And then the third one is prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy. And, it's the fourth one, actually, and there you go. And then, um, just hitting the highlights as we move beyond that. If you look at, uh, page ten, construction activities under E five. There are hours that I've, I think I stole them from one of your previous decisions, construction exterior. Uh, is between seven AM and six PM, Monday through Friday, eight to four on Saturdays. Construction is defined. But thirteen on the next page. Uh, the O and M for the stormwater management system are to be provided, uh. By Brian and the, a town has the right to come onto the property if it fails. Or if, or if we fail to maintain, maintain it, and if the town performs any necessary maintenance, the applicant will reimburse the town for. All expenses associated therewith. And the next section on page twelve, under number five. Uh, we agree to pay the applicable sewer permit and privilege fees, including a one-time. INI fee of five bucks per gallon as mitigation. Uh, under G, the next provision down, we're gonna set up a condo, and that condo will be set up before the conveyance of the first unit in the project. And the applicant will be responsible for, in number three at the bottom of the page, it's at the top of the next page, I guess. For the obligation until fifty-one percent of the units, and then he turns over the responsibility after funding it. To the condominium association, because he's now a minority owner at that point, thanks.
Sorry, I'm finding typos, I hope you don't mind me fixing them here and there.
That's good. And that's about it for the, for the highlights. Um, we did, uh, I think Lynn and I should tell you that we did, after discussing this, or, or listening to Charlie in the last meeting. Uh, we just, we decided, and, and discussing it with Brian, we took out two waiver requests, one was for. Uh, bypassing the sewer commission, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna let the applicant go to the sewer commission and. Uh, do the usual, and the other one was for the curb cut. We also took that one out, we'll just do the normal procedure without, you know, playing the forty B card. Everybody thought that was an easier way to do it. We believe you.
Uh, if I, if I may, you, you really wanna go to the sewer commission for this? You don't wanna keep it under the comprehensive permit?
Well, we're just gonna get the permit from them. They're gonna, they're gonna approve the plan anyway because it's their bailiwick, but, um, you know, if they don't give us the permit, we'll be back.
Okay.
That's the beauty of forty B. Nothing's fine, ever.
Can I, I, can I ask a question about the, um, the HO, the homeowners?
Yeah.
Association, I, what was, I, a little more clarity on that fifty-one percent, and that will turn, if, if the, if the project is at fifty-one percent, then what is put in the hands of the homeowners association?
So this has to do with the maintenance of the common improvements and, uh, you know, other common responsibilities. As long as the builder is the owner of fifty-one percent of the, of the units, then the builder's responsibility will be to pay all costs. But once he's forty-nine percent, the burden to, to pay the cost will be flipped over to the condominium association, and the builder will make a contribution in accordance with the remaining units that he owns.
Okay.
But the responsibility for paying the bill will go to the condo association.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Go back, going back to the board. Uh, any comments from anyone?
Just a clarification, Ozzy, on the, on the plan. Is it my understanding that a, a master plan will be prepared that'll go to the registry and then as you develop units, you will supplement that with plans that will be put on record? They might not be like a recorded plan, but they would like a sketch that shows your setbacks and distances between buildings and that sort of thing?
I, I, if I may, hello, counselor, if I may, I would like to see a mila of how the land is first. And when they do condos, I mean, Mr. Counsel Bobrovsky could answer this, of course, but when they do condos, they're gonna have to do as built, as built as the construction and, and the setback and all this. As a matter of fact, I just did a couple myself, you have to do even as built for how, where the window or the interior walls for everything, it has to be recorded. Counsel, do you wanna reiterate on that?
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
My reason for asking is that I would, I would like to see a reference put on that plan that the, the project is subject to, we'll call it a covenant, if you will, but, uh, to certain security for road construction.
Okay, the special permit would be attached to Wareham, will be referenced to the plan, I would say, right, uh, counselor?
Just put a notation on the plan so that there is a, there's a connection between the two for title purposes.
All right.
Yeah, if we added, if we added a note to Lynn's paragraph there, we could just say, um, uh, any, any covenant, uh, shall be, uh, inscribed on the plan and recorded at the registry of deeds.
Okay, will, will in fact, there will be a plan that goes to the registry?
Yes.
Okay, would that be a plan that the ZBA would sign?
Yes, it, yes, even though it's not a subdivision, we could put a signature block on it for the ZBA.
Correct.
Now, remember though, as a comprehensive permit, like I said, nothing's final, so we may have to record multiple plans.
Uh, but wouldn't you do that anyway for condo situation?
Yes, absolutely. But just, just in terms of the forty B, I think we'll probably do it, um, in, uh, not every time certainly, but we'll keep up.
But let me, let me iterate on something here. I would suggest we do the first mila for the whole project, get recorded, and as they go and they start selling them, they would need to do a mila and get recorded for each building, otherwise they won't be able to sell them, trust me. So, uh, so they'll be going back and forth for ten times, and eventually the project will be done. So each building, when it's done, it needs an as-built as the design as well as the setbacks. So, so that'd be going there, well, and, and this will, of course, is gonna defer from the proposed, it might move an inch or two to the foundation. So they'll be going there eleven times total.
Yep. Lynn, that's inscribed, that's described.
Inscribed, sorry.
Just put in.
I didn't get that, Mr. Rowley. Wanna say it again?
Can I make a suggestion in that last sentence that you just put in, that it says, any covenant shall be inscribed on a plan or subsequent modification thereto?
No objection.
I just gotta make sure I spell subsequent, right? Or subsequent, Lynn, or subsequent thereto? Did I miss a word?
Modification.
Okay, hang on. Fingers are, are tired. Oh, God.
Yeah, I'm starting to feel as a guy, I stand to feel I'm a good foreigner now.
Yeah, put, yeah, there you go. There, no, 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 there too, one word.
Yeah.
Boom. Good.
There we go. Thank you.
Mark's gonna buy me a manicure after this.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take typing lessons for you. I'm, I use two fingers, so I'm no one to talk.
I, I, I will, I will tell a very funny, but quick, quick and funny story, which was when I got out of college, for whatever reason, somebody encouraged me to take typing lessons, and who of us knew that our lives would be spent working on, on keyboards, um, because of the invention of computers, so.
Do you know that back in nineteen fifty-six, Wareham High School was teaching typing to any kid in class that wanted it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think I probably took it at Brookline High, too. Kind of funny. Who knew?
Substitute taught typing, and I don't know how to type, so.
Well, I can't write in cursive, so you know.
All right, let's proceed.
Okay, so we were feeling good about this language that it's covering everyone's concerns about when we pull a building permit, when we're doing foundations and getting a plan on record.
I'm happy.
It's, it's not, let me just say this about the, uh, the way that you go about the, um, security. In case you want to put up a performance bond, there is nothing in the local regulations that states that you need to supply the planning board or the ZBA with documents that itemize each thing. That's, that's sort of been the, the way it's been done, but there's nothing in any of those documents that, that prescribe that. So at least make it a part of the, the minutes of your deliberation, that that's the understanding, uh, that suitable documentation, uh, for any of these items that require performance bond be included in the request. So there'll be a method of actually determining whether or not the, uh, any release of that money is appropriate at the time that, uh, the request is made to release it.
With the, Mr.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, with, with the chairman's permission, I would, maybe I'll, I'll put the release terminology in the covenant, and I'll just use the standard methodology for subdivision releases, which is an estimate plus an amount for a cost of living increases or inflation plus a margin of error. Um, and we'll, we'll work with Mr. Riley on that language when we do the covenant.
That's, that's fine.
That's finished, Charlie. You good?
Yeah, I'm happy.
Are you, are you okay with me sticking in other, in parentheses with release language? Does that sort of cover that it needs to have that in there?
I know what it means.
Do you want me to take it out?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, very well. Okay. Comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, this is Chris. I was just curious, what was the decision on the trash?
The trash, the son, the town would treat the project as every, at every other project. So they're gonna make them use ABC. So it's them, between them and the town.
I, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think the, the, the discussion at the last meeting was whether or not we should be using individual trash containers or a dumpster, and that's why we brought it back up. And I believe Brian's conversation with the town and with the, the trash service was that they will allow individual containers to be used that are, that are going to be stored in the garages. They're, they're not requiring a separate trash container. Therefore, that's why the plans have not changed.
Okay, Brian, you wanna, you have any input you wanna put, go before we hopefully close?
No, Lynn's correct about that. We had a discussion with Dave Monard, uh, and, and we confirmed what Lynn just said.
Okay. Anyone else? Any more discussion, counselor, before we hopefully close? Anything, closing argument, anything?
No, thank you very much for entertaining, uh, my, my romp through the comprehensive permit. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. Being said, let's get a motion to close.
Oh.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Akabachi to close two dash two one TGCA, TGCI, Amanica Comprehensive Permit, Chapter Forty B, Settlers' Grant, three one two eight B, Cranberry High, Map Eight Lot One Thousand Seven C. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
I'll second, Chris Conaty.
Okay, Chris, unfortunately, this is, uh, Richard sat on this, so Richard, what, you can't vote on that.
Okay, I thought it was me.
I'll second.
Sorry.
Second, that's okay. Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye. Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And Nazzy, myself, aye. It's closed. Now, any discussion before we go to any motions? I hear none. Okay. Now, motions, wishes, hopes. Jimmy, what are you leaving?
I got it, I got it. Somebody knocking at my door. I'll be right back.
That's like you take it off. And, and anyone else could make a motion, not only Jim, so who would wish to make a motion?
Sorry, I gotta, we gotta leave you hanging on. I'm doing, thank you.
Oops.
Can I make enough noise for everybody?
Yeah, where the kids crashing?
I got an office with closed doors, but they, and, and three doors on my house, but they gotta compound on this one. Anyway, I'm back, sorry.
Well, so the whole board, we, we've been looking for a motion.
Um, is that like the kind of motion you get out of Motown or a motion on this?
Do you guys wish, if you guys are on other options, then I'll jump in, so.
I make a motion that we, um, go ahead and grant this application as amended and discussed, uh, but the, but that we have the opportunity to see the final draft of all that redlining.
Before we go sign?
Before we go sign, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jim to grant two dash twenty-one settlers' grant. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, Nazzy, aye, it carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we'll be back to see what the minor product modifications as the project begins, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Miss Reed. Thank you. All right, we move forward to public hearing twenty-eight dash twenty-one. Mark Gaines, I hope I pronounced it right. Special permit or variance, twenty-nine Bay Street.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one at six thirty PM to consider petition number twenty-eight twenty-one for a special permit and or variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table Six Twenty-Eight, and Article Thirteen, Section Thirteen Fifty-Two under the Wareham Zoning Bylaw, to Mark Gagny of twenty-nine Bay Street, onset mass, proposing to, to increase the floor area ratio from thirty-one point five percent to thirty-four point seven five percent, where thirty percent is permitted on the subject property, located at twenty-nine Bay Street, Wareham Mass Assessor's Map Three Lot One Ten in the MR Thirty zoning district.
All right, uh, Chris Conaty would sit on this matter. Okay, who's presenting? Mr. Gaines, you're here, but Mark? You gotta take your mute button so we can hear you. Bottom left of the screen should be mute button. All right, why don't we jump to the second hearing until we got a table? Let's table this hearing. Here we go. Okay, Mr. Mark, what's, can you, can you, Mike, what's your last name? I'm sorry, Mr. Paul.
Gagny.
Gagny, okay. Mr. Gagny, wanna tell us what you're doing?
Yes, so we have a, um, addition approval on.
I, I need, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I need, uh, your address for the record.
Twenty-nine Bay Street in Wareham.
Okay, go ahead. So what are you trying to do there?
We had an approval for a building permit BP twenty dash four to extend the, uh, foundation to, and to put in a, uh, a large kitchen and a handicap bathroom. And by doing that, we, the foundation itself, the entire foundation was done, so we have a complete basement underneath this permit now, and we'd like to be able to use that basement. So, um, David Rinquist, Wincreya, uh, its office, uh, gave us a denial letter and asked to go to the board to increase from thirty-one point five to thirty-four point seven five percent. Where, right now, we're in the MR Thirty, so Thirty's only allowed. So we're asking for the approval so we could use the basement space.
Okay, do, do you have a, is, and do you have an engineer with you or just you presenting the case?
Uh, I'm presenting the case. I use Brian Grady's, uh, TAF Engineering, and we also had a, an engineer, uh, Michael Bendetti that, uh, did the engineering plans.
All right, so you need, you asking for a waiver on the floor area ratio?
Correct.
All right, okay. Okay, we'll start by, okay, this one, Mr. Conaty, so another would start by Chris.
So, so basically you're just refinishing part of your basement, right?
Correct.
So you can use a rec room and, uh, exercise room. I, I don't see any problem with it.
Okay, Veronica?
Um, I don't have a problem with it. I do have a couple of questions, though.
Yeah.
It's, this, um, in one area, it says it's increasing to thirty-four point seven five, but then on the application, it says thirty-eight percent. So I'm not clear on what the percentage is actually going to be.
That was a, I'm sorry, that was a, um, correction. That was by David's office of inspection services. That, my calculation wasn't correct, his is.
Okay. And then, um, my, my other question, I guess, is, um, I thought that the basement did not, was not counted as a floor, living, living space. So I'm not sure, why is, why is this before us?
I guess, I guess if it's finished.
Inspections.
Yeah, if it's finished, like Richard's saying, if it needs inspection and become living space, it will count on the floor because if they finish it. Thanks, Spencer. Okay, just to clear up for everyone, this is, it's an existing nonconforming anyway, so he's extending the nonconformity. So if the board feels is less detrimental to the neighborhood, we'll treat it as a special permit. If they don't, they'll become as a various. Okay, I'll move to, Richard, do you have a comment to say?
No comments at this time, sir.
All right, Jake?
No comments at this time.
Jimmy? Sorry, I took your last.
No comment.
Okay, anyone on the public wanna comment on this for yes or no? I hear none. Okay, that being said, was, uh, supposed to close?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
And Mr. Gagny, wanna say anything before we close?
No, I appreciate the, uh, consideration here, and, uh, we do have three letters from our budding neighbors saying that, uh, it would not be detrimental to their.
Right, well, I read them. Just for the record, there's three positive comments from the neighbors. All right, uh, okay, we have a motion by Jim to close. Do I have a second?
Second, Richard.
Second by, by Chris, uh, and all in favor, say aye. Uh, Chris?
Aye, Chris Conaty.
Jake?
Aye.
Jimmy? Jimmy's eyebrow. Jimmy's, aye, Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It's closed. Now, uh, how does the board feel about it?
I suggest it's not detrimental to the neighborhood and should be treated as a special permit.
Okay, do I have a second by that, uh, the motion by Jim? Do I have a second on that?
I second. Yeah.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Uh, Jim?
Aye.
And Jake?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So now it's a special permit. Now, what's the wishes?
Well, I think in all fairness, that, this application, we should make them wait as long as the um, forty B applicant had to get grounded with the court. And, and then, he's smiling, he's like, all right, never mind, we won't torture. I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, with the standard conditions, uh, so motion to grant with standard conditions and the finding it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Chris this time, if you get the other time, so Chris, second by Chris. All, all in favor, say aye, Chris?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Jake?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It carries. Thank you, Mr. Gagne.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, next, next item on the agenda, if I could find that.
If I, if I, while you're looking, Nazir, because I was late to the meeting, I probably missed it, but on the continued publics, number, the third and fourth item, were they both either dropped or continued?
We continue, uh, DJ Mannix and forty-five Longwood. Gee, uh, Georgiana and Mannix.
And, and Alyssa Morris, Morris as well is continued.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, Alyssa Morris, yes, sarabat. So thank you, uh, I lost the agenda. Can somebody read next one? It's the last one.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one at six thirty PM to consider petition number twenty-nine twenty-one for variance from the requirement of Article Six, Table six twenty-five under the Wareham zoning bylaw to Derek Rogers of Nine Mallard Road, Wareham Mass, proposing to construct a ten by fourteen detached accessory structure in the right rear corner of the subject property located at Nine Mallard Road, Wareham Mass, Accessors Map one thirty-three A, Lot ninety-seven in the MR thirty zoning district.
All right, Mr. Rogers, name and address for the record?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, name is Derek Rogers, address is Nine Mallard Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, zero two five seven one.
Okay, so what do you, tell us what you're doing?
Uh, we are looking to put up a ten by fourteen shed with a four-foot overhang, so the total dimensions would be fourteen by fourteen. Um, we're looking to do it within five feet of each property uh, line on the, both the back property line and the side property line, primarily because it would have put us on a slope in our backyard that would have required significant um, alterations to the property in order to accommodate it.
You don't have a survey of plan?
Uh, I had attended a previous hearing where it was approved that I could use the drawing that I had proposed.
Uh, when, oh, 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 okay, that was a while ago.
A little over a month ago, I believe.
Yes.
Mod Ave or Mod Street?
Yeah, Mallard Road.
Mallard Road.
No, I'm just saying, he, he's going from the, the house, the shed that was on Mod o- off of um, Old Main Street. I believe Chris and Veronica went out and uh, visited the site.
Oh, no, no, that one is uh, that was, this is uh, she's on uh, Jackie Nichols. That's a different one. That was, when she's one of the assessors, I think she's the assessor.
I forget the gentleman's name who was here yesterday, but somebody did come out and, and, and visit the site. Okay, so Richard, uh, Mr. Sample, it was you. Um, and, and saw the, the corner, um, where I was looking to propose putting up the shed.
All right, very good. Uh, this one, Mr. Sample's gonna sit on it, Richard. So, Richard, you'll be our eyes. Tell us what you saw.
Father's uh, uh, size of his lot in the backyard is uh, to a, a medium to small area. He has one shed that's up that he's gonna dismantle and take down. He wants to move this one over to the side. The yard slopes, um, probably at a uh, probably for every foot would probably be about eight inches as it goes down and it levels out in the corner where he wants to propose to put the shed. And what I see is if it goes by the regular uh, zoning laws, it would kind of ruin the whole rest of his yard if it had to come off in either direction. So, that's what I saw there.
Okay. I think this is the perfect hardship example, the top of a length, or a variance. All right, start by Veronica, what do you think?
I, I went by the property, but I, there's a fence around the whole, the whole backyard, so I wasn't able to see anything, so I'll just take whatever. Rich went there, so I'm fine with his assessment.
Right, so I do think, like I said, I think it's definitely as described by Richard, it meets the statute requirement of a variance. Jimmy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I'm, um, no sense pre-laboring it. I noticed that um, I believe the original hearing, um, the applicant was represented by counsel. Did you, did you throw the chair into the applicant? Did you just decide, determine, you just didn't need to pay the attorney to come sit through this exciting meeting and you, you'd be okay alone, or?
I, uh, Doug, did you ever have an attorney? He never came with you.
No, I, I, I never had an attorney present with me. It was just me.
Maybe I'm looking, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a request for an extension, that probably weren't. It's okay then. It didn't apply to this.
Okay, uh, Jake?
No problem, move forward, sorry.
Thank you. Jake?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Uh, anyone on the public wanna speak in favor of this matter? I hear none. Anyone wanna speak against this matter? Also, I hear none. Okay, uh.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, a motion to close public hearing for Mr. uh, Derek Rogers, twenty-nine dash twenty-one by Jim. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, aye, closed.
Make a motion to approve and grant the relief as requested, standard conditions.
Okay, we have a, a motion to grant the variance and it meets statute, and on the findings, it does meet statute requirement of a forty, chapter forty A, section ten, based on that, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Richard?
Second, by ladies first. Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Richard?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It carries. Done, thank you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Very welcome. Next item on the agenda.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
I object. Jim? All in favor, say aye. Judge?
Aye.
Veronica?
You're just glad it's not three AM. Aye.
I know. I wanna go out. Hey, Jim?
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna really compliment you on your um, very patriotic background with the flags behind you and um, it moved, it moved me. I saw, I saw Ken was in the dock. I saw the attorney with his law books behind him. I saw, everybody had these wonderful backgrounds and I'm usually a little fishing, so I put an aquarium behind my head. Good night.
I, I must say, though, it's quite, it's quite an interesting, it's quite an interesting backdrop that you have there, between the uh, you going to get the door and that backdrop. It's been a pleasure watching you tonight, Jim.
I, I don't see anything moving in that fish tank, though.
Yeah, but there's, there's shapes, but there's shapes in there that are little uh, phallus looking.
Kenny, wanna add anything before we finish the motion?
All done.
All right, on the motion to close, Veronica?
Uh, yes.
Yes, Jim?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And myself, Nazir, yes. Thank you.
Nice to have a short night. Good night, everybody.
Evening all.
Yes, be ready for next time, won't be short.